Is the properly founded and all the more important places? I make a motion we approve the agenda presented.
Second back.
We have a motion in fact to be in discussion. All the favors and say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time. Then approved. Did the board develop?
We need to be calm.
I agree.
Thank you. There we go. So, hopefully the board a little bit will be working on the board development things. My statement to the community who may or may not be watching is as before, it's an odd thing to do development in visual settings, so we ask for grace and remember that we are working on things, not reading off scripts, so we had need a little grace work with this. Okay, so first of all, I thought that our last workshop was really well, but that that's
Yeah, I agree. It wouldn't be getting way of that. That's what we're looking for, isn't it?
For comfort and authenticity, right? That's the obvious ability to be able to do that, and that's that might not have happened last week because we often make groups longer working together to be moving to a page, so I was pleased that we'll have engagement. What I wanted to move to working on this week is that so far from my time in the board April forward, we haven't had a lot of particularly emotionally related things to work with. And I expect that at some point we and so working on some processes that we as a group decide that this is how we work under decision making will help us when we get into more emotional issues so that we make it through what we call really good problem solving processes, even if the emotions level is high. And our research and years of experience tells us that practicing that now, it's much more likely we'll actually do it. It's the hardest thing to do when you're in the midst of really learning on like to also think, I don't know if we're doing a very good process here and try and figure out how to do that. So that's really what I want to talk about today and have us work through. As I let you all know here, I have a model here for us to to use, but I'd like to use it on instead of on a hypothetical situation on one that was agreed on last week that was a good process that this board had done. And before I want to really questions, concerns, or anything you would like to see me? So we think about high quality decision making. The the model I got for you is one of the communication models that was one of the most used. Randy Herrickell and Dennis Gower's model. Randy was one of my professors in graduate school, so I got to learn a lot from him. He is currently the dean at Hilo in Hawaii, which is where he is from. And he's a baseball base player at the age of seventy-five. Right, he's having a good one. He really studied smaller decision making and how we can do high quality decisions. He looked at it in hospital settings, academic settings, and one of the classic case studies is that I'm going to tell my successor about what happens when we don't follow through with high quality decision making. So he and Dennis laid out these pieces and for our purposes, we'll walk through them, but the middle of it is really the most useful and important part. And now that I've started this round, I completely forgot to bring that slide that I said I that we were looking at. Do you think you could be able to pull it up?
The six month, the class.
The ladder, so we're going to share with you some of the one of the sessions that we had been at. And well, we're going to talk about this, how that gets done was on one of the slides that I've already prepared, so there's not a lot of I don't think they've even thought of that in here, but almost nobody ever presents this thing, so really working through it, hopefully most people. So when they look at it, they see there's four members that decide part of the high quality decision. And the first part I think is less of an issue for us, but we still need to know is the analysis of the problem. And the first part is, how do we know there is a problem to be solved? For school boards that probably play that the most, what's the difference between one data point and a pattern? And generally, when the things that we have been discussing, these are part of that in here, have been more patterns than the how you don't want a problem as a problem, once it's sweet. So I not noticed that as much of an issue because I'm identifying this to us, somebody has identified it as a problem or as something that is potential. This is something we could be doing. Whatever it is that has potential, we don't like to name that as the problem because it's not that there's something wrong with it, but we will have to figure out resources. And so there is still conversations to be had there. But here, here it goes, that we need to be sure we know what the problem is and we all define the problem the same. That part I do think is something that we can, we're on as a board, do we all think this is, what type of problem is this? Is it a systems problem, which is what we would generally be working on? If it's an individual problem, then that's something that as long as it's below the superintendent level, it's something that somebody else might be working on, we might be commenting on, but it's not a managed that part. So figuring out where we are in that problem, I haven't noticed a huge problem to that in the last four months, I think that that is not what probably most of our work needs to be done, but it is what to keep in mind. So the piece thing. Let's go to one of the slides that reminds not a class session.
It's a session.
At the state superintendent's
All.
All members. Making up terms here. And I have these two good in front of us because this is how, these are the things we do to make these things a lot other than happen. This is how we communicate to make this happen. These are for the most part, things I think that I I have observed in this board and I have observed in the community from this board. So I I know there are things that y'all can do. They are nice to have out as a list of things to remind us as we are speaking with one another. I'm going to move past analysis of the problem unless anybody knows that and would like to talk more about that.
I agree with some as far as time it specifically comes to the board. Maybe group or certain group of people or superintendent, principal, it's been identified as something that needs to be alluded and discussed.
But I, very fundamental that I've ever seen, well, I have lots. From the community, the board that the board said, that is not a more area of concern, and in that case it wasn't a part. My observation, being a community member, in the one is addressed whatever the community wants to them, so I have not observed that that's necessary place for us to work. The goal setting part now. As much as I love Randy for a lot of things, I don't love the terms he used for me. So he said goal that here. But he doesn't mean like how will we work to work together. He means, how will we know if we made a good decision? And if you don't set up the criteria first, coming up with how we know we made a good decision after we've been discussing it for a while is unlikely to lead us to a high quality decision. And that's because once we are enmeshed in the conversation, we're going to have the things that struck us as most important become the criteria individually. But we need to take turn of the criteria before we start, so that when we get to the decision, we can reflect back and say, does this meet the minimum criteria we identified for success? Now, we could exceed that. But we do have ideas that we really like for this thing over here that does not impact the whole of our criteria. So as a community member, I occasionally do, did observe this happening. We could have a new conversation and let's say there are three factors that are probably important in this. And the first factor is lots and lots of discussion. And sometimes the other thing she said might be important, never really came back to this idea to get you three things. But this line I just kept on popping here, and that's eventually what the decision was made on. Whether or not that hurt the decision is not my fault.
Also, he suggested when you identify the numerous criteria, three criteria, five criteria, you spend time discussing and analyzing each one.
Yes.
Before you make a decision.
Yes.
Versus what may be obvious to us to the most regardless of rank.
And you could say that as we are discussing, if we're, we should be looking to see if we do think those are actually in this right. So on any, I heard that we talked about this in a moment, but it's still more than great building. Could have been just by the financial community, it would have made a good call. But you identified more than my criteria, talked about each of those criteria, even though it was an important criteria, it wasn't the only one. Now, if you had a member that says this is the only one and others that thought that others would press for more, you actually may have the discussion there. You don't have to all if you go by majority, you don't have to all agree. But working towards a sense of understanding why these things that are important actually helps me have the rest of the conversation. Because if he identifies as something more important than I did, my asking them why is going to give me better information than just presuming that everybody does agree, right? I don't know where to find that information. So that's a good place to identify where we want to be asking one another more questions, but for gathering. And then one of the things that they find is that groups that bypass this part of it often find they're very emotional, they are very emotional decisions, the impulse just to run right by this part is strong. And then we tend to get decisions that in retrospect were made on emotion or to prove power and not necessarily because they were high quality decision. Your, your hour, Gower, Gower will tell you that working through these processes, people get a little frustrated in the beginning, why do we have to do this? I just want to jump to this part because we have forty years of data that how we did our decisions can be further be part of it. I think I'm going to talk about these last two and then talk for at most, you should view how we make that case study, because I like to look at when. The identification of alternatives, they have this three. And this is what we would call in other words basically brainstorming session. It comes up third, not first. First, you gotta figure out what your problem is, setting your criteria, then you start brainstorming. Good brainstorming sessions do not evaluate each idea as they come out. They get the ideas on the table and then they evaluate them. Most groups and numerous boards I have observed, start the brainstorm session with really good intention and about the second thing, start talking about why it go a whole lot worse, and then they don't do any more brainstorming. So we find that some of our overlooked decisions happen because we didn't get everything on the table before we started figuring it out. For us, some of our alternatives, we while we are brainstorming, we are cognizant and restricted, so we have state regulations. We have a budget, but within that budget, we do better choices, so it's not like this is without brainstorming, but it's kind of find out what some of those ideas might be. Sometimes our final decision is that it's something we need to fix, and we wouldn't have found that out if we didn't get what's on the table. So then after everything is on the table, we come up with a good number of things. Then we evaluate the positives and negatives of some of those ideas. In a study, Gower and Herrickell counted a meta, they looked at sixty studies and they looked across all of the studies. And they had always told that each of these four things are as important when on the ranking function. And across sixty studies of organizations, hospitals, academia, and businesses who use the, use the model. The thing that actually predicted a high quality decision was, was at the bottom of your page there. Evaluation of the negative consequences of alternative solutions. And alternative solutions doesn't mean alternative for choosing, an alternative is anything on the table. So we have a tendency, once we have the thing we kind of like, to build up the parts we like and to not want to say as many things about, but pretty negative about that, because we want everybody to choose what we want. And so identifying the negative portion of it is just a part of the decision. It just helps us get that information out. They found that to be most predictive of whether or not we come up with a good solution. It is very human nature to want to see that part. Does we like this one? We're working towards this one, but what are the downsides of it? I think one of the reasons it's even harder is we have to stay into a record when we're reporting. And as people are listening, well, this has a downside, why should we do that? But they all have downsides. Every choice is a lot of times they ask, can you think of something else? So identifying that one system makes a good decision. So would like to be a question to pass.
Yeah, so is this process develop to take the emotion out of it? Is that the basis of this to say, if we just follow these steps, then it takes emotion of the topic where that NASA business school, it takes the emotion out of it, and then you're just looking at scenarios, solutions, pros, cons?
Well, we don't really take the emotion out of it.
Right.
Still there, but it works as a corrective factor. So that even though it's still there, as long as we're coming back to the process, then the human parts happen. And we as a group then can decide at after we talk through this, is that why the different example, why I observed a different setting? That if we decided not just to do the process, but we decide to say things by, I want to make sure we've really gone through all the criteria, we feel like we have a good, we named one, I don't remember any others. And as a group, we say, this person is not trying to real go be or rugby, this person is trying to bring us back to the process. When groups can do that, that lets the emotional thing happen and still brings us back. If groups are worried about being judged for bringing people back to a process, then we tend to stay on that emotional right? And it's really hard to come back. So it's not that we have to solve everything, it's that we agree on a framework that as we're working through it, we will get off topic, have emotional issues happen, say things we, say the way we, I hope we two said them. And this helps to bring us back to, really back to the that's their hope.
So let me ask this question, we didn't put a pin in it, if it is better answered later, but so like, and we're going to go over an example from last year. Which is a great one. But you know, if you fast forward, you said, hey, let's, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, do this or work to effort this process, all right? How are we determining when to engage this process and when not? I think though by our policy committee last year, this year, we're systematically over three years going through our policy. You know, that's, to me, that feels different than, you know, the example we're going to go through. So how do, how do they discuss or what does the data say that, like, when you incorporate this, when you don't, like, how do you determine that?
So they said there's a difference between a problem and organizational, whatever you're saying. And go through regional policies, that portion of it is the organization that will, will keep in for people. These are the things we need to go through. Now going through that, if there's a policy that doesn't seem to fit any longer or any place there's tension in an conversation, we can go this way, we couldn't go this way, that's the indication that there's something to discuss there. It might be a short discussion. If, if it's one of them, like when we're talking about that and asking people what is important about is the opening to, we don't we think there's a problem, we're looking to see if there's a problem. And because it's about benefits and resources, should we discover that we'd like to be doing something different, then this is probably a process to go through with.
Got it, okay, thanks, thank you.
If it's you, yeah, your guys in a row.
Yeah.
That's a terrible goal setting. Good questions, other questions? Have you engaged in process like this and any other boards or work groups?
Uh, me personally, I think, yeah. We brainstorm on, you know, like the sales teams that are part of what's going on in market, where you're, where you're looking at, what's going on in market, like, how are you are you attacking that market, what are competitors doing? So we look at, at this particular or stat process, I'm taking at this particular one. Just different way of like analyzing a problem or if sales, right, you want more in your funnel, so how do you get more in your funnel to be able to get, you know, more to guess?
And it's very possible, you use portions of this, it's not all, but just without the intention of this is what we're doing. In fact, a lot of the things that you think are particularly created solution, something that we tried, that we have tried before that we really liked, if you look back, you may have done a whole lot of this.
Yeah, I, I agree, uh, again, when you're, when you're thinking about sales, you know, it's like, hey, what, what can we do different than our competitors? You know, so that part was kind of that, uh, if you want to identify alternatives, you know, and then kind of come back, if we do that, there's cost to it, there's not a cost to it, there's you know, we need more people to do that, and so I can see the bits and pieces of the framework in stuff I've done, but we've never kind of, at least in the, in the bank side, we'll, you know, kind of say, okay, we're on, here's our problem, you know, boom, boom, like we didn't actually do that. We just, we knew we had a problem. Need more involved.
Is that everyone?
No, it's not.
Probably, we, we, everybody needs the Egyptian pots or
Kind of like can I work with with such a process like this? Sense approach similar to this. If you're good at individual and using the process, you're going to have a better chance of playing your, with board members of your rationale for joining them. And when we get into the fourth grade issue, if we were to come back and talk about alternatives and then talk about the negative consequences, it probably would have been really, really helpful to that process. Because I think we got caught in the emotional part of it and never actually covered all the different points that our administrator presented to us on his rationale. And we should have come back and looked at those in more detail inside the emotional part, it was the drive of that decision.
But the we can have something that we might process mostly for all and still think, we come back at the end, whenever you put around a group that makes a decision, I'm not saying that this has, this is a different situation, and then later you're like, well, we didn't anticipate that outcome. It often has to do with not having gone through what the negative psyche, mostly for like a group PR issue. We didn't want to say them out loud, so nobody would be thinking about them, but then the group didn't decide them, so you thinking about them on your own is not a group delivery process, this is for groups to deliver, to learn and deliver together. And eventually, as groups use them, they get better at doing it. And the, let's say shortcut, you're not short cutting anything, but for people that say, you know, school district, by arms. Some of the criteria for their decision, some of them are going to be great costs, so we'll have to be coming up with them, we didn't know them yet. We know that we have customs about safety and about achievement, about potential things that we want to be able to do. Naming them in that kind of, here we have our blocks, we know these three are going to be important here. So it's a little fuzzy to start with, like any new process, what even people? But the person I see use this, develop a good agreement with one another, and they develop comfort in having the conversation. Would you like to dive into the
Yeah.
Great decision?
Yeah, let's do that.
So I am, I'll ask some questions as we go, but I like, you tell me how you think you went through these four steps, because I did, I'm, you know, right, I'm sitting out here.
Right.
So all I know is the pieces I saw, and it was a much different decision process than I saw in some of the, some of the other decisions. If nothing else, it would have been over three meetings. Is that right?
At least, definitely. Yeah, I think there was a, probably just a brief initial discussion, and then I think we did a community event. And then a fuller board, maybe two board meetings.
Two board meetings.
Yeah, so it might have been this is going to be on the next one. And we talked a little bit about it and then heard the people or how, I, I know, feel like we had a meeting, we had a community event, and then we had another meeting.
And then we had another meeting.
Yeah.
And we had notes of prior information. This was not something that had been on our radar for a long time.
But as a process, it had kind of lay out one of the things we know about the decision making, because if it's some things seem urgent but are not and sometimes it is the emergency decision making portion of it, there are emergencies where decisions can be and that's a pre-actual process is a different process. But most of the things that we do are not that.
Yeah, I think I missed your third one, but you worked your way back from what we did in Rome. Correct, that's, that was kind of, so the idea, yeah, the idea started, right? Looking out, Ronald, you on saying, hey, you gotta make it terminal, it should be changing. I opened a Roman figures for all reasons. Yeah, this was September, second, August, September, whatever place where kind of that started with, you're saying, hey, gotta have a discussion, a robust discussion. You know, I'm going to start it now. So then it was, yeah, you had the timeframe set up, because he worked back from, yeah, this is our absolute throughout that day, yeah, it's going to be, if we make a change as a, as a district, that changes the big index of what we can accept and not from a whole more understanding, just a little people perspective. That's what I
Okay. This is a subset of, I was giving you the sign, this is, we have the problem, it comes with more, it was a regular issue, but there is the same kind of this problem. My data, looking at the numbers, we need to make a decision. So I thought maybe about your discussions of the
See, that would take I was like, this is a little bit more, this is the nation, only I have a board member, and not like the others. The doubt is because we had at one time done this process before. So, so it gave me a totally different perspective than the rest of the board members. I was going on there now of, of this a minor issue where the other board members were, it's something new.
Yeah, and I think I'm just thinking back, I think after it was, hey, this is going to be an agenda item. You know, my normal process is to think about it for a while. Could be a day or two, could be me. And then typically we'll have side conversations with Ron to say, hey, this is, this is like what I've identified as things that I would be interested in knowing. So if you're going to do a, and I think in this case it was a presentation, I just said, hey, this is what I would look at, just off the top of my head of information I need to be better than the one. And I have to go back and think about what all that was, but I'm sure it was all I can think about, it was special ed space, what was our special ed space situation four years ago versus today as far as number of rooms that were available, full size classrooms, other space available versus what it is today? Because as we have grown and our enrollment went from low seven hundred to nine hundreds, you know, we've had to adjust and add more sessions. I think we talked about what space was over there. Uh, what space was over there, if you give me a tour, uh, or here, what space was available, how that could be configured. To, uh, to add classrooms and, and we talked about the cost of that, and we came back over to interview her at the primary school. Look at, well, we could do this, this, and this, so there was, there was space, there was money. Uh, there was staffing. You know, I think those were all the things that I identified. Um, and then similar to you, um. I think, uh. I can't remember if I qualified the media or if it was just, uh. One of the intermediate teachers, I think, you know, that's, I forget, uh, about, if we've done this before, we can take care of these kids, just let, no, that was professional. You know, so there was a, oh, okay, well, I think I had a follow up conversation with Heidi, and I just said, hey, what's, what's your experience? What was the biggest challenge, how the kids overcome it? To your point about. Yeah, Heidi's had a lot of experience, you did, you know, uh, but when I think about, uh. This process, to your point, like, you did have that kind of tribal knowledge of been through this. It's, we made it successful for the kids. If we would have been using a framework like this, we probably could have come back. To you and Heidi for more information, more questioning and said, you know, like. How many years was it, you know, and I identified things that were good with it. Not good with it, et cetera. You know, there was some staff, some board members who talked to our fourth grade staff. And every board member did take a tour of both buildings. And we kind of gave you a question that you highlighted, and then there were more along this mother.
It did break down to the floors. The evaluation piece of, uh, gold. It would have been, uh, a different, uh. Discussion or. At that level, but they became an emotional issue right from the top to get a lot of. Did you take her, number of students, probably seven, eight. Parents who moved here to us.
I don't disagree that there was emotion involved, but I do think we did take and review a number of those things, the cost. You know, what's the cost to build out space here, you know, I think it was, was wrong numbers, half million dollars, well. Actually, we would have been on this three, we would have added them almost nothing over here at this time, and move right over there, so. Yeah. Uh, and I thought if we wanted to move the future, it's about that. Yeah, and then versus, you know, you know, eighty to a hundred dollars over there, build out some spaces, you know, so I think we. In, in some degree, we, we did this. Without knowing we did it, but I don't think we fully did it, because again, we, we would have, because we did talk about. Space, we talked about, uh, the trends of enrollment and like whether or not like. Now's the right time or like another fifty kids in the primary school, does that hit us there? Uh, you know, because once you, once we did the remodel there, call it a remodel, small remodel. There's not a lot of free space for another class. You know, so that, that kind of was part of, so I think we did it, we just probably didn't do it as fully and robust. Um. But I think in the, in the scheme of. I think to your point of giving the expectation, it wasn't, I felt. That it was a, a very, uh, thorough discussion versus any other discussion that we've had on, on other things. And we challenged Ron, um, I think we talked about a lot of things, uh, we could have done. Deeper dive in a lot of that.
We could deeper dive in that.
Yeah, and I think that's where like, looking at this and saying. The alternatives and then coming back to the positives, you know. I think that would be, uh. Probably to your point, maybe so that you wouldn't have felt any short change, although it. Not being able to share all of your experiences, like, that could have, like, it would have been more robust.
Check your mic, make sure it's up.
There, I'm getting some questions, I'm talking through the process and the conversation I have, you're having heard, a lot of these steps. That, um, going through the process for the fourth grade building, and one of the improvements they self taught was that the, the fourth one, uh, step. Is identifying the positive and negative characteristics, and I had shared that the authors, looking across sixty studies. Uh, who most frequently skipped step was evaluation of the negative consequences of alternative solutions. And all by alternative, they mean everything. And there, one of the sessions was that that might have made this a more robust conversation. And my goal is for being a little bit.
Uh, so. I guess I want to come back to the, maybe it's number two here, where it says, you know, what are, uh, I think I wrote down, how do we know we made a good decision?
Yes.
It's kind of a beam of, of number two. Well, I mean, what do they say about that group setting, right? Because to Dean's point, and to your point earlier, like, we're a group, we're not all going to agree.
Correct.
And so. Who determines, does that make sense?
So they want, in this case, the group should agree on the criteria. How the criteria are met, you may not necessarily, that's the, the, the choices. So the minimal, I, I heard a bunch of you around about their, uh, space, money, staffing, videos, and I think that'll lead a part of every discussion.
Yeah.
But, but then you also elaborate, so it wasn't just staffing, it was members, but it was also experience, do we have. logistical space, do we have? People who are, have the experience that they can work with us, so those are two different criteria. And yet, I think it's unlikely anybody at the table to allow.
Yeah, and, and I just think the other, unrivaled or, or onset, when we say emotion, emotion is really apparent, the same, like. Uh, when we're going to move. These big, these little kids with a whole bunch of big kids, that was one of the themes we had heard through that, say, wow, you know. They're so big over here, and my little fourth grader, you know, they're going to look like giants over here, and so that was. Uh, yeah, pros and cons, did we go through that to some degree, I don't know if it, if we're following this, you know.
It was named as concern and concerns about the criteria, so it was a lot of the criteria, then it's emotional safety of children, right? Or emotional safety is by the right word, every.
Emotional impact.
It was named, and then, but the different parts of it were not really dealing with that. So, well, since we're worried about that, let's focus on this other solution, because we know we're worried about that. You didn't really get into what might some of those altering of speed see what are the possibilities?
The other thing that I thought we did a good job, I think. Each board member spoke. And shared and asked questions, I thought that was another thing that was, I think, maybe a little bit different than some of the discussion we had last year, was everybody was participating. Asking questions, asking for information, I think that was, because I, I do remember. Getting emails through that process, saying, hey, so and so asked for this information, sharing it out, you know, that's what I remember too about that process is. You know, there was, uh.
Input.
Yeah, equal input or equal opportunity for both to have input, whether it was for asking for information or asking questions. Thought that was the, the other piece I, I thought was really good, that particular was, uh, and then it'd be challenging sometimes, just hearing from a lot of people, but like. Having that community forum, we did hear from a lot of. Ron, I know, I think, but no, um. He worked on getting Bill the most, obviously, we were all just kind of the same at that point in the, in stance here, but, uh.
I agree.
Yeah, because that was different, we, we, we paused before we made a decision and said. Hey, everybody, this is on the horizon. What are your thoughts? Come to this meeting, this is going to be especially just for this topic. Uh, and that was something that, you know, uh, was unique to last year, uh, that we did on, on individually for a topic. Uh, this is first time since pre-COVID, probably, that we, we got together, we've done transportation before Dean, we've done a couple of things about that. But that, that community forum though was driven by questions from the board. Multiple stakeholders, uh, and again, I remember not just the emotional part of it, but you guys looked at the academic and the achievement part of it, about. The middle school component, about the, you know, what happens, you know, the bridge between elementary and middle schools, and when is the appropriate one, so. And all of that was driven by school board member discussions followed through an inquiry. Yeah, um, which led us to that presentation, we'll maybe like to four. Three to four robust conversations with our meeting with the board.
Hold on, hold that. And as an audience, first, was on all of the other parts, I think, okay, now they're asking me a different question, and a question that I hear somebody saying. Well, before this, I never thought about that part, which is on the same, and it was trying to say, I got a good foundation, I'm taking the same. And then also by saying something, that somebody else, our communication is continuous. So your reaction this time, somebody remembers over here, so I didn't think about that before, and somebody, oh, okay, they are reconsidering that position. Or thank you for sharing that, that gives me an insight. I just, we hadn't heard what you think about, and I saw that going on in the board. I think it's particularly compelling as well that, as Ron and I discuss. You need not take Ron's recommendation, but he identifies your process as a good process.
For your process.
Good, and that's very compelling, that if you, if the process is not being driven by a bunch more, people listen to me and see me be authority. Then the group decision I think. But going through a process and that, there were different meanings. But for most part, people can do the angry process. That's why we use purpose, that we see. Will be a good choice.
Yeah, I think the other positive is the way. Need to have neighborhoods. Yeah, subdivisions and. Uh, more younger people moving in with kids. It's, it's a baseline, uh, it's there, uh. Whether we're all here in a future board or on a future board. Future boards can go back to that, maybe more, watch that video, look at the presentations that Ron did. Uh, look at the conversations we had at subsequent, uh, meetings. As a good baseline for, you know, identifying what else to, you know, look at.
That's also a really important that boards. Really don't operate that, and there's not a lot of really new issues. So most things we have considered, even if it's named in titles, we're doing it, but I could have asked the nation issue before, even if this. Issue before, and so the. Knowledge that you have as well as being able to access to resources. Doesn't mean you can make that decision, but it helps you to think, what are those criteria, what are the factors that would affect those criteria? I was thinking as you were asking about that criteria part, Andrew, that it could be. One of the things we usually do is, that's something we don't want, that we don't know in the basic in our goal setting, say, well, of course. Our criteria is always, always the, your, your education, sure. But what is the criteria for knowing if we are meeting that? And so, for example, I could foresee that, for example, would we want to spend what we need to spend or not spend too much? That's a good criteria. Would we have that always anyway? And so being able to try and figure out. Is this something that we are willing to, we think we have a professional issue on, or is this something that? Is not at the level of importance that we want to do that, like that would be an example, criteria we want to come up with before we launch into the discussion. How would one be to get, to figure that out, but we want to know, what is it minimally that we need to accomplish? So it's like, oh, go, and then go for the next, and they go best, but. Can't see how it went, but maybe that's what works, right? We need to build on that. Question about that. So thinking about that, I want to point us to that second page, communication types, if you see the number one. And these are the three different words all come to say, but. Promotive, disruptive, and counteractive, counteractive is a term that's helped explain that. But if this is board, this is something that we're using, then we identify provocative discussions, interactions about using the process. It's an interesting question, this seems like something you're going to need to, uh, wrap it with. We've identified it is a problem, maybe not, that's definitely, we talked about the fact that by the time it gets there, it's usually a problem. So then what are, we get excited, we launch in for somebody saying, have we identified all the criteria we wanted to use? Then that's considered a motive decision or motive communication, it's an interaction that's focusing us on the process. That isn't a, well, we better stop, let's talk about process, saying, are we using this? And the team, the group would say. I can't think of any other criteria interested, everybody in the program, oh, okay, we have a building criteria, it makes the space for someone to say. I'm wondering where this fits. And it might already be covered under criteria, a different criteria. But maybe I don't know how we want to think about, so that means it's very promoted. Disrupted is totally a centered communication channel, it's designed equal away from the process. So that. Try to run decisions based on how we're able to, try to not to do this. People don't come and say, don't do the process, only pay attention to me, but a lot of that communication that. Keeps people from doing the requisite functions. In. When it is happening. Most people recognize that it's happening, sometimes not the person who is engaging in it. Particularly to the emotional reactions to this. But finding ways to speak to one another is more of a, a job, and letting the emotional part be said. And then relooking, it's weaker, get on the emotional front and be going for them, it's much harder to impact. The credit is something to stop in the middle, though is not very, you don't have pretty good that sequence, this is the thing that is running its way off, so listening. And then. Responding on, it sounds like you were concerned about this, that helps you get back here. What is the piece of concern that brings us to here? Well, that's part of the norms of collaboration, that's a fair reason. And that gives you, in fact, it sounds like. You're going to be concerned about X, and I'm either healed or I'm saying, well, no, I'm concerned about this other thing. But it lets us deal the same age there, while coming back to the problem itself. It doesn't mean, you know, and, uh, I can give you that opinion, that there's no one's wrong with you, that, that type of thing. My friend just had their fifty first wedding anniversary, and they were asked to give some wedding advice at, uh. One of the friends that we grew up with on there is, and their wedding advice was, try to say, what the hell is wrong with you as little as possible? So, keep your head, acknowledging what people's concern is, and then bringing it back to, uh, this is. All the helpful, the disruptive part, the, the term I don't like here is counteractive, is what they mean is how do you get people back to the. Point, or how do you get that people back on track? And so counteractive is instead of saying. Why would you think something like that? I can't believe a thinking person will think that, of course, it's obvious, no, it would be. Identifying, this is something that seems like it's concerning, could be get back to the criteria. So they say counteractive, but what they mean is we veer off trying to bring us back to the decision making process we talked about.
Like a question, I think, how would this get us back to a rule? We will try to accomplish.
Yes, yeah, and. When we ask that question, I think, like, if you ask me that, I'm initially going to feel really confused. Well, why would you be asking that? One of the things that we can decide to react is when you say that you are letting me know. That you're not sugar why and saying that's what we're doing, and so I'd say, well, I thought this was the part that. I was trying to do, right, so he uses an opportunity for clarification rather than condemnation. Like that, that it feels, say, as you work through the process, we get better at it, at the beginning, a lot of these questions. We will have more defensive responses, if somebody is questioning us. What we're, if we're giving up a process, the questioning is to get to our goal, and not to be judging us as the person sitting there. So you have a lot of these last few minutes, wanted to make that idea, think about this paper here. I think I answered my last time, so that part of it, folks, they do a lot of their work in Palter. And so. One of the things they look at for, for, for resources and helping families make decisions, is what happens when we're going through the process? And we're at what, like, we see pretty sad, and so they say, these are concrete questions they want to press. How important is this to the other person's core beliefs for that? We've all had, uh, discussions or arguments with some of the people whom we just did not understand how to do that grant. And so that portion of appreciation may not mean we decide to do, but it generally changes how we approach and react to that person. Instead of as a, uh, terminology, pardon, students who pop server. This is the person who throws things in for the purpose of chaos and enjoy the chaos. That's not, it's not that it's their poor belief, so they do it. So there's a big difference between that and I'm really stubborn on this because this is a central part of why I made up here. Not just before I think I am, so as part of it, but why am I here? Why am I this for? So then how important is this to my own core beliefs or values? And then their third point is how we move. How flexible am I without compromising my priorities? That flexibility part, we sometimes really live as weakness, but it's a group's decision. So the flexibility is part of what we do. How can I be flexible? But not compromise. So this is an ethical way to. Generally, in education, all compromises, the technical rules, is everybody gets upset when, involves everybody, thinks it's fair, looking about, and we're okay with it. But compromise is one of our ways to improve difficult situations.
I think we hear a board of employees, uh, someone said, this is my, my non-negotiable.
Okay, yeah.
Step, you step beyond my.
Yeah.
Yeah. So sometimes it's a, it's a little bit of a challenge to try and counter conflict. When somebody feels like they, we've talked about.
Yeah. Now, when we get to that non-negotiable, you get to talk about why that is a non-negotiable. This is my non-negotiable. And should we say, can you tell me more about that? What would I say?
I'm sure we've done that or I'm just trying to, like, putting out beers about her. And I.
The non-negotiable.
Yeah, because I. Some way, how do we, I don't know. I'm trying.
Something because I was writing.
I'm trying to think, but maybe it was instead of.
From the, in the audience, I heard. I saw it as the audience, I think its purpose is trying to set parameters. I'm letting you know where my parameters are. That's my thinking. As the board's saying, and why is that? Sometimes there is our opportunity for collaboration in census is right under the surface. It turns out more non-negotiable than yours are a lot closer than we thought the reason was the same. And once you hear that she actually was thinking that. Oh, well, then maybe my non-negotiable isn't as rigid as I thought because it turned on the value for the golden law working for us.
Probably didn't ever want to make me.
But.
And the board member, you have to be able to say. I'm not going to get myself upset. Because we're not here intentionally trying to disrupt things. And, uh, this is a very good exercise for me because it makes me think more and more about. Especially the meeting, questions that I should be asking. To try to get people to explain to them, uh, why they had this position. And it was a good process for us to, like, more to be able to. Do what? You know, explain our reasoning. Not naming names, Grant, but we had one more member in the past that would. Think how loud she was. And he would be thinking, talking at the same time. And it was a process that kind of gave a light because. I didn't have to worry that I didn't know of these.
I heard. And I, it, it takes getting used to it and it, uh, but, but I thought it would help, uh, facilitate conversation too.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Because it, because I found it, I, you know, that then I would say, well, what about, I would ask questions off of it.
Yeah.
And I thought they were good conversations.
I do too.
We, we might not have all agreed on the fact, but I always left there figuring, good conversation.
That, that's right. And, uh, and I didn't have to worry. As a board chairman, that something was not discussed. That usually came up.
But that portion isn't that, like, when I interview voters, my, uh, voting question is something more about that. There is. We also don't, we're also constrained by, well, they, how much should I say or how much space do I want to hang up in this conversation? And when have I made meetings that I was trying to make this? So if I can do it by this, but with smaller amount, that's what I'm aiming for. But if it didn't connect, then asking me for more information, I'll give you permission to expand in a space where we might not feel that. Uh, we won't spend a lot of time back on this, but page seventy-four on that end of there. It's the Academy of Finance Foundation. I used it during all that I was in. Focus for the time I was doing, the National Finance Foundation, and it's the difference between debate, discussion, and dialogue. Each of them have their place. There's the, uh. Upper part of the debate discussion, and then on the side, what does it look like? What does the communication look like? Self-orientation, other orientation? The emotions that tend to be associated, and what's the goal? So when we think about our process from the looking at there. Step two, finding the criteria, that's more of a dialogue process. We're trying to find common ground for the criteria. Step three, brainstorming is, you know, it's not really the day word discussion, but seeing more ideas on there. Step four is discussion. What do we want to know more about that? But it's discussion on our way to dialogue. So one of the things I like to think about it means is the self-oriented, self-orientation, what I have to do, other orientation, what am I doing with others? What am I doing with others? So the discussion primary goal to self-orientation to clarify and understanding each other. Other orientation, I listen in order to insert my own perspective into what they said. This is something that we do. And part of that in discussing is for doing sensing. If you think this and I think this, then. How is what you're saying fit in the world, I think? Will we move to dialogue that I'm listening in order to really understand where it is that you. To understand you from your perspective and not how do I fit into your perspective, which are different spaces. I would say boards do discussion and dialogue better, actually, and all their discussion and dialogue the best. Uh, do, when they do that, well, they work well, when they're particularly comfortable, they mostly handle the debate really well. I don't know if it's the name, just put, uh, especially where that we can write, so I don't think you said, or reported. But debates right now is more of the, as far as a more of your devil's advocate pieces can come into. Uh, for the purposes of wars our size, I don't see it happen very often. I, I. It can be useful. I don't know that it's something that I foresee as quite as much. The, even though I would say some of the things that we do in there, we choose the desire to win, because we want our idea to be the one, right? But we're letting go of what is my idea and what am I going to do in the board's, when we can make that decision together? That's also much less energy. Those that sit there and think, like, so he's going to attack me. That's why I have to go back. That's, uh, that's a burden to do. Uh, before we, it's rare, we spent. Oh, three weeks observing a, the team that I. Didn't know about is that they're, they're just generally telling the parents, people who love different perspectives that said, I haven't made big, hard decisions every day without patients and families that have worked together. And what I averred with them is they went most efficiently, whatever's in my life, ninety minutes, they did it for their patients. And one of the things they said is, why don't we need the space to chat? One of the things they needed was, that's the only time during the day that they see other people want to chat. Otherwise, they need to be off the families. They're having fun at the hospital where physicians don't necessarily like them because of our attitudes for dying and everything. It's like, there's a lot of stresses. So they needed that meeting, which is also a focused meeting, to be a place where there could be little jokes, where there could be these things. But they knew that they got off time. That's one of the things that they named and put into their structure is. They need a person who was observant about, you know, the joke is the joke, and then eventually the jokes are the counterproductive. If you want to keep that feeling, they need somebody to be good at figuring that out. And they named one the timekeeper. And so they'd be happy, something, make the little joke, it gets elaborated. And that person, when they saw it heading down, they're at the same time, and I saw every person, fifteen people at the table, turn back and go back to work. What? And talking about this, they period them off. It took them a while to not, like, this, I'm going to be fine. But we agree to the structure. And so we need to say, this is the counteractive, who at the first same time was bringing them back to structure while still giving them the thing. So we design, we like the structures like this. Our decision to work on that together allows us each to say things like. I'm not sure we got through the criteria without taking it from somebody else, like, I can't believe we did this, but. Could we make sure that we follow the process that we were willing to follow? And we take that as a promoted and not as something that is against. Is that something more interesting to do in, like, in our conversation? It was also very interesting for me to hear what I observed in the audience from their perspective.
Well, thanks for reading. I appreciate it.
Or do I have anything to say, Paulie? Should we even?
Well, there's say, I.
Hi.
Well, thank you. People would like to see. Broken down into, okay, it's, okay, so we're gonna go through many points. And I'm ready to, nothing there, nothing there. Okay, Rachel, the only one that's, what they want to speak here in the meeting.
How?
Yeah.
Okay, um. So, I have, uh, one primary business and I wrote, would you guys know what's going on? Is that I wrote to the board and I wrote online when, uh, the board package came out with, uh. Stephanie's second check, uh, letter of resignation, because it's the fact that she was out there. With a hundred and ten, did a reset by herself. And I emailed and I got a little bit more information. I got a schedule of the resets. Um, but that still didn't show that there were enough out there. And so I guess my question is, could you? Kind of share at this point how we know for sure that primary uncovered. Um, like what the plan is, and then also are there board policies for, for like company, for kid, or whatever? Have you ever set up a board policy regarding, um, how many staff need be on there for kids? I guess, yeah, can we start there?
I'm glad that, given the, the day-to-day operation. Um, thank you, Rachel, for reaching out. Uh, again, I, our supervision schedules are governed by our principals. And, um, when our, our principals, you know, see possible holes or, or hear concerns, again, they then react accordingly. So those reactions include coming either talking to her team, is her team, um, talking to me, and trying to problem solve. As well as the lawyer, as I should say, too, as well, because all three of us kind of get together and problem solve. And then from there, we determine if more resources are needed, or more people are needed, or we need to find a creative solution and make sure that all that are covered. So we can't tell you, gonna, Kristen and I connected today at the primary school. Again, we are covered. With two supervisors per grade level, which is, uh, and I did do some research with our, um. Our, our Arrowhead colleagues as well, uh, all of them got back needs at Parton Lakeside. And, uh, the ratio of one to fifty is very, very common. It is their guidelines, again, according to their, their superintendents. Um, so on top of that too is, is I know Kristen has engaged with the PTO. Um, as an opportunity to continue to get families involved and to get more people into school. Um, it's not as a way to flood a hole or fill the dam that, you know, if we don't have any supervisors. But it's just extra support if needed, very similar to whether it be starting a group parents again. Or, uh, again, just what are some ways that can actively get involved? And Kristen has been working with the PTO and, and again, uh, any, I mean, created a sign-up sheet and things like that. But that is for extra support, not in substitution of our staff, who we would expect to do that on a day-to-day basis too as well. So, um, we are very confident, uh, in talking to Kristen and our team, that we are fully staffed appropriately, uh, making sure that our kids are properly covered.
Could I please ask this a bit? Can I please have, like, who's out there?
Again, I, you have, I, we, we shared a schedule with you.
Oh, yeah, I have it.
Yeah, we shared a schedule with you. And again, obviously, we have to replace one person and that will be filled. At the time that we have to buy next month.
Can I share this with the board? I brought some print jobs if you guys would like a copy. There are still a couple of grade levels where we're down to just one, Mondays and Fridays.
We have those, uh, again, I refer back to Kristen, but when there's one, we will have some sort of administrative or coverage that will make sure that there's two people in there.
And then is that like our short-term plan or that?
No, we are trying to replace the position which was fake.
Okay, because I'm worried about the short-term plan if we, um. I guess, you know, we have to like count on admin or, um, staff, any staff, really, to like fill in just temporarily? Depending on how long it might take, like, will we lose more staff?
Well, we're, we're under the same concern that you do, it's just like most of your businesses too, is that we are in the, we, we are looking for people. We are always looking for, for more additional people. So, um, but we also are in the, the, the game of pitching in. So if in fact, if you highlighted Mondays, Fridays, or if there's a, a person who is gone out of the, uh, for sick absence, either planned or unplanned. Um, we do make sure that those gaps are filled with that current staff, um, that we have. Again, we try not to lean on our teachers. I know some school districts have their teachers supervising lunch and recess above and beyond the thirty-minute, do you free lunch? Um, we don't have them in our plans. Again, it's about forty-five to fifty-minute recess and lunch. We give that courtesy to our staff. Um, so, but again, working with Kristen, we do have some other people that we can possibly lean on, whether it's Kristen, Lori's, you know, Lori pitches in all the time. Uh, again, I, I volunteer and again, the other piece too that we don't see all the time, it's Kristen and Steve continuing to collaborate and saying, hey. What more additional coverage do we have here? What can we get by? What can be covered here? Um, so again, we do, it is a blanket effort to making sure that we do have progress.
Um, I am concerned because like, I know for one reason, they was before the grade, um, there was a parent volunteer out there and then there were two staff, um, aides. One of them resigned and then the other one, um, both of them had, like, children that they needed, you know, to be like in a radius of. So, and then somebody needed to go in with an injury, the parent takes them in. Now it's just the two left out there that have to stay within a radius of kids. And there was a hundred kids that resigned. Do we think that's good coverage?
Again, I don't know all the details. Again, I would encourage you to talk to Kristen about that. And I do believe you have meetings up. So I would, I would talk to Kristen about those unique circumstances or situation, you know, I'm not familiar with that.
Okay, well, I guess then my question for you within the board specifically would be regarding, um, Stephanie's letter of resignation. Um, that's quite the. What the message in there? And I wonder if you're concerned about that at all, because I mean, not only was she an orphanage adult, a current parent. And I think that's a white, the serious accusation that, you know, she was out there by herself. And based on the calendar that you set, um, it looked like that is true. And you couldn't deny that it wasn't, so. Nothing?
I can only share with you what the, the interaction with Kristen, not in the sport that we do. I can only share with you what the interaction with Kristen and I in support that we've been able to lend. As a school district, whether it be from problem solving, additional staff.
So that did happen.
I, I don't know if it happened or not. I got involved.
I can answer that for you.
Oh, I didn't. Fifth, fifth grade or five to eight and first grade for sure. Which, so they're five year olds, right? I have a friend that has a five year old at Merton that's ten five.
Sorry, at ten thirty, we do have two other teachers that are out there too as well.
According to Stephanie's. That was.
Yeah, and, and, and again, I'm not giving, I, again, I'm. I'm not the expert in what that supervision schedule was. I lean on our administrative team and their collective efforts. And then when they come to me, and again, because I was called out in that letter, I'm just telling you, when it gets to the superintendent's desk. It was met with problem solving, additional resources and support. As best as possible.
I mean, she resigned after we didn't get any pushback from you.
I never, and again, I, I've never had conversations with Stephanie about.
Okay.
So we're getting into an area here, right? I have to, I have to. We have to go with caution. Um, because there's accusations going back and forth here. We are agreements. With you. For staff numbers here at Merton. So. If there's something to go through the protocol where there's agreements made and that's how at the first level. Be with the media supervisor, next level. The next level supervision and then it gets up to us. We have to be the ones that. Review that and make the decision. So on a day to day operation things. If we are tainted. And, uh, we can't hear agreements. Because there's, there's bias. Then. Problem can't be solved. So that's why in our, uh, policy, we have the steps for grievance. So. I, I caution. What people say. That you're not biasing this. Board. On something that shouldn't actually be to our level yet, this is. Big in the operations.
President, I'm sorry, I understand what you're saying and I totally agree. My concern is that this is immediate safety of kids. And I don't know how this hasn't come to your grievance yet, but I only have an issue with it because it already came out to the public. This letter and there was no message from any of you or from Ron saying, hey. We've, we are looking into this, we're following these processes, this will not, this is not, you know, true, or if it is, we are dealing with it. I mean, that only came out after he heard that I asked parents what's going on. You guys sent this out in the board package, so everybody was privileged to it. It wasn't like it was. Or something of the stuff.
That is something that a letter of resignation. Has to go with the package for us to act on. So that's what we're acting on. That's why it's in the, in the pack. It's a letter of resignation. I'm just asking. That we be careful. Because. We at the board. Have to be able to be. The judge and jury. In grievance. So we have to take in. The information that's presented to us. And then make a decision. And, uh. Until. Works its way up the chain to us. It, you, you're creating a very difficult situation.
Again, I'm sorry that she designed that. Sorry that I did this. I absolutely, Merton parent, great employee. Um, we wish her nothing but the best, but yeah, I'm sad that she didn't.
Rachel, I would say that. Without commenting on the day they portioned it, since that's. Not the purview, that discovering that was supposed to be found out about the issue, then I asked more questions, we. Engaged that issue, so it's not that it's not engaged, it's that it. In part happened after the board package went out. Right, so that between. Thursday and Sunday. That's the state of the agenda and we don't, to the best of my knowledge, ever comment on. The, the letters that come out with it, but it's not. Not being talked about. We're talking about. Making sure that the issue safety specifically, what she wants, do we have out of the safety for kids? So we are aware.
In, in our expectations. With our administrative staff. Is taking the children in a very, very high priority.
Amy, would you want to ask a better?
Uh, sure, I, we can have, uh. I don't have anybody else to ask. He's got to talk on this level, but go ahead.
So I'm the husband of that teacher that resigned, again, you're representing her way. Um, my wife did resign and she, and I think we've talked more about her right now. She caused this fire real fast and finally we're seeing that happen. Which is amazing. I, I appreciate that. That's awesome. But I will tell you that there is a much larger concern in the fact that this is just being addressed, but I have my wife's schedules here from the last few years. Where I can show you that she was the sole supervisor on that playground, day in and day out, or months on end. I can also pull up an email. That has information about an injury on that playground. That said, with your safety being top priority, this is the response that this email came in.
Are you just gonna prejudice the board if there's a grievance?
There is no grievance. I'm just telling you. That. There was complaints about football equipment on the playground. Asking for it to be moved. To which the response was, have the kids moved, starting again. Then two days later, there was a student that was hurt on that very same equipment. So you're talking about safety being your top priority, you should probably look into this a little bit more. So shame on you guys.
Yeah. Was there anything? Football equipment, yeah, I, I asked the. The chief at the moment. And I don't believe it got moved, but then Jordan surgery. It said they would take her. I, I wasn't planning to sign, I didn't sign up, but I think you're aware of this issue of the staff for. Previously, that's all. Supervision every cells. That you know.
Last.
Yeah, I've got a thing. This is day to day operation. And. Needs to work its way through the system.
But it has and it's been rejected. So when does it come to you guys? If Principal Higgins has gone around. Ron's done his best, which isn't enough at this point. Didn't win. I just want to say that, you know, we reached out to the principal of the other leaders. And it's more one to thirty, one to twenty five. There's a lot of extra help out there. Ours is the, is abnormal. And seriously, we have parent volunteers out there that are coming back daily now saying. Yeah, it's not fixed. Okay, so I know, I understand that it's a process and you guys are working on it, but we are still seeing. That it is not happening, that that's a lot. There is no help out there. So it still doesn't come to you. If we're not, because I just don't want to lose more staff. The staff did not feel safe out there watching the kid or asking for help about it. They're going to flee again. You know, and how many times do we not listen to them before? And I don't, it's not about Stephanie specifically. I get it. Let's not talk about her thing, but can you please? Tell me that tomorrow, there is going to be enough people at my kids'.
Yeah, would be approached to you often.
Yeah, I got the answer and it's not correct. And there isn't.
Can I also say something? Not optimal when it was, I agree with you. We've had too much over the last few years. What's also not optimal in this situation is. I'm sure I'll get, uh, chastised for this. I apologize, but we're having an open dialogue. Going to Facebook. Before you have a conversation. Getting facts into our own words, we don't know all the facts. And then. And then when we have a brand new administrator after a very difficult year. You go on Facebook and say, she's overwhelmed. Does that help or hinder her ability to lead?
That is literally from Dr. Rust. I'm not allowed to share with anyone, like other parents that are concerned.
It, it is a.
Our board is not functioning correctly and our system is not functioning perfectly. We grow by working together as a team. It's not trying to start drama. It's trying to make sure that this stuff doesn't keep happening.
Man, there's talking. I didn't argue with you. I just trying to have a dialogue. That's all. I think it hinders her when she's a brand new employee. And we're sending a message out as parents, concerned parents, I understand that. That she's overwhelmed. When staff might be reading that, other parents might be reading. She just started here. And that's the message we want to say. Do we want to lose her?
Do you?
No, I don't, but I think having, uh, having, having parents. Put that out on blast, I don't think helps the situation. But, but do you think that helps the situation?
Yes.
At this, I would respectfully disagree. I support her. I'm glad we have.
I do too.
We had five board members last year. Not this board, this constitution, but five board members. Who didn't agree on a lot of things last year, were unanimous in selecting her. That was a huge deal for that board at that time. I was proud of that.
I don't see how this is her problem. That's why we're disagreeing. I'm trying to get her.
Yeah, I, 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 again, I really disagree that, that shaming her and saying she's overwhelmed. Puts it in a negative light. I've had people come up to me and, and. Had a negative reaction to that. I just want you to know that it's not taken as a positive what you, like you meant it to be. That there are people out there that view that as a negative towards our brand new principal and administrator here. That's all. That's all.
I, I know what Andrew says. Kristen, I don't want to put you in the hot seat. If you don't want, do you have anything you would like to add or address?
Thank you. Um.
You can respectfully decline.
No, I, I, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to just share with everyone here. That. Um. I guess I just, I'm not comfortable that words are coming out that I didn't share. And so I will say that the feedback that came back to me, it was not received as. That I was. I was looking for support. When I reached out to Crystal with the PTO meeting, it was before the school, the, uh, before the school year had started. And it wasn't agendaized until whenever the last PTO meeting was. The PTO meeting was recorded. Many of you are sitting in here now, we're at that meeting. And I did make it clear that all of our, um, we have ten. We have five lunch hours, five recesses each day, that they were all, each one was covered by an employed. Member of the Merton community. And my response was that I was trying to be responsive to the feedback that I had heard from the community in coming into this new school. And being proactive. We do have more children with medical needs this year. And so my attempt was to get additional supervisors, um, whether it be parents, things of that nature. Out on the playground to be proactive, but there was never ever a day. Um, if there were days, I will, I will isolate that when Stephanie was out there by herself. Um, I had met with Stephanie and talked about potential plan for like handling behaviors, so on and so forth. Stephanie knew. That I, that I was in contact with Mr. Newcomer, with Lori, with Dr. Rust. In order to put more supervisors out on the playground. So this was never like a plea, we, we need to fill these holes. It was. Um, in trying to work with PTO, a win-win. We are trying to do more with them and build a positive relationship. But it was never like, we don't, we don't have these. We don't have these provisions built. Did Stephanie need additional assistance out there? Absolutely she did. Absolutely. The other thing that I want to say is that in response to the social media postings. That blew up my mind last week and it was not a positive light. Um, it was a lot of time spent on answering. Very specific questions, which I agree, student safety is of the utmost importance, but I've been transparent about it. Um, there was nothing that I was trying to hide, otherwise I would not have brought it to the PTO. Um, again, it was in an attempt to be proactive to previous feedback that I had heard. Am I overwhelmed in this condition? No. Is there a lot of work to be done? Absolutely. But I feel when the message is out there that I am overwhelmed, I feel like it makes me look incompetent. And I have been an administrator for eight years in a building with twelve hundred children. With some pretty challenging needs. Is this a challenge? Absolutely. Am I on board? Absolutely. Am I excited to be here? Absolutely. But that did bring negative attention. To my name, um. But despite that, I'm here for children and I will continue working to get more supervision out there. That is my main priority right now in filling Stephanie's vacancy, which she is a loss to us. I'm very sad to hear that in the short time that I've been with her. She was phenomenal. She's very flexible, always willing to go where needed. Um. She is a loss for us, for sure. And that's just where I'll leave it is that it's. It will never be. You know. To, in my opinion, we've never had enough adults out there. That's how I view it. Thank you.
This is kind of integral. So with all this, right, I was looking at some board policies. Reasoning past policies or other outlets. Because it may be an ethical issue. Right, a board member is interacting with any person or group that's advocating for the board or district to make a certain decision or take a particular action. I don't know where that was in there.
Which policy number is it?
Uh, one. Yeah. You don't even get to describe all that works in your, from your view.
Nothing we see, man.
It says in it, maybe on an ethical issue for a board member, if interacting with any person. Or group that is advocating for the board or district to make a certain decision or to take a particular action. So the example here, right, you have people advocating for this district to make a certain decision. Right, or you board members make a certain decision. And your policies that can be considered unethical.
Action. Well, Justin, isn't that about like contractors or people that want to?
There is a separate one that, that discusses contractors or that. I just wanted to bring that to your attention so that it can be addressed.
Sure, we'll take a look at it. One fifty three point one.
Uh, I'll look here. One sixty five point one.
Or one sixty five.
Yeah.
And it said group, not organization?
I wanted to see the rating. Yeah.
Clarify that.
It's a conflict of interest policy.
A language thing that I would put in this, not a group, but.
It's an any person or. If I was in your position, I'd be very uncomfortable with that being a policy to have the.
Is that specific to this? Are you thinking about this situation or are you?
It's true, it's, it applied to any situation, right? Someone reached out to you advocating for the school, there's something, it might put you in a position after. Uh, abstaining from that.
Would anybody like to speak here in the meeting?
You can just, I'll, I'll ask her.
Sure.
Things like that. We're talking about day to day activities. This was, I didn't know this was an issue before and now it's for the community. The. Having heard that, we don't forget it after this meeting is over. We're talking to, we're talking with our administrators, talking to our administrators. There's a difference between hearing something and knowing it's an issue and saying. Saying Kristen, this would not be my. Not in my purview, you need to do this, this board member to principal, that would not be that interaction. So. I don't want the community to become, hear that speaking and us saying it's a day to day issue, doesn't involve words, it's.
I don't want the community to become, hearing that, speaking and us saying it's a day-to-day issue, doesn't mean the words, you're listening and looking for follow-up. So, we are listening to you and trying to follow through with our chain of command and listening to what we hear as the problems as well, so. I will still be listening and still be.
We just last thing to, if, if our staff, my staff, my administrative team asks for help, they get it. They get it. And, and Rachel, just to kind of, again, I didn't talk to the principals of those schools, I did talk to some superintendents who are the principal. And they have confirmed the ratio of one fifty. So, that's from their, their direct emails, so. Okay, anybody else?
Rachel, you, you said you emailed the whole board about the situation, is that true? You emailed everybody on the board?
No.
So you left board members off?
Yes.
Right, I did not know till this morning that uh. You were not included in that email, I usually don't. When I get an email, I don't, I'll change.
Not kind of a recommendation, so other school districts such as the Hanington School District, you're the one email, all board members, you know, Hanington is. School board, something, school district cabinet, yeah, we highly encourage that, so you have to, so you have to tell them.
Yeah, I don't think I was the only board member left off either.
I found out that the poll was not even.
Correct.
Uh, you know, I didn't know you.
Face in the future, if you are going to email a board, if it's something that the board is going to pick up, please email the entire board, greatly appreciated.
Jonathan, it kind of sounds like you knew that I left those two board members out. I just wondered another about.
We're not, we're not, we're not.
Okay. So that includes the community board, but we are going to move on to the board meeting. There, and, and calling the September twenty fifth, twenty three, four being the order, I mean, there's a. Okay, let's finish and finally vote it all now, voting sizes. The motion, uh, second to approve the agenda presented, discussion. All favor then say aye.
Aye.
Both say aye. What's carried? Was that something?
Sorry, sorry, okay, he said aye.
Okay, we're on to the minutes. You just had Monday, August twenty eighth.
Okay, uh, motion to approve the uh, Board of Education map for Monday, uh, August twenty eighth, twenty twenty three.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Okay, this is a question, if uh. Technically, voucher number is wrong, but we asked you to bring it back, so we're going to re-approve. We will amend voucher listing again this month, but that was what was approved for the minutes, if they're not going to change this, because that is what we approved, right? But we'll then re-approve that voucher listing that. Right, okay.
Yeah, cool. Any other questions, concerns, additions? In all favor of approving the Monday, August twenty eighth meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Both say aye. Motion is carried. We're on to the. Fill listing, nine to fourteen, build it for July and August.
So we will need to amend, we could just read that, uh, and I would amend the minutes. Or we're not amending, we're just approving. I approve the minutes, but now we will be amending the voucher listing from last. I believe we are reading the two voucher listings, and it's correct, yes. So we started hours ago, I guess, correct, uh, just start with the first, yeah, good.
May I have a motion first?
I mean, you're beautiful, I agree with you.
Oh. And I should improve the voucher listing, so I hope that we. amend, nope.
But I, I think you just want to, just, just do the voucher listing like you would normally do, like read the, read the July fourteenth through August the eighth. And then, like we made it normal, because we already did.
So I thought I did it in two separate vouchers. I hope that we, up for the voucher listing for July fourteen, fourteen, twenty twenty three, August first, twenty twenty three. Direct deposit number nine zero 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 six zero one two seven, nine zero 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 six zero one five four, nine fifty four thousand, three thousand, six hundred and seventy eight dollars and fifty cents. Direct deposit number nine zero 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 six zero one five five, through nine zero 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 six zero two one four, nine eighty thousand, forty two dollars and fifty cents. Correct deposit number nine zero 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 six zero two one five, through nine zero zero zero. Six zero two eight three, in the amount of seventy six thousand, two hundred and twenty seven dollars and fifty cents. Correct deposit number nine zero 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 six zero two eight four, through nine zero zero, zero six zero three four three, in the amount of ninety thousand, nine hundred and twenty two dollars and fifty eight cents. Correct deposit number nine zero 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 six zero three four four, through nine zero 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 six zero three eight two, in the amount of fifty nine thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty eight cents. Correct deposit number nine zero 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 six zero three eight three, through nine zero 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 six zero four four two, in the amount of ninety seven thousand, three hundred and forty four dollars and six cents. Wire number two zero two three, zero 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 zero, through two zero, two, no, that nine, no, that no. Starting again, wire number two zero two three, zero 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 nine, through two zero two three, zero 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 four two, in the amount of three hundred and ninety six thousand, seven hundred and ninety six dollars and seventeen cents. Our total payroll of eight hundred and seventy two thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and thirty seven cents. Accounts payable, check number five five nine nine five, through five six zero six one, in the amount of four hundred and twenty five thousand, eight hundred and forty five dollars and fifty cents. Wire transfer, two zero two three, zero 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 one six, through two zero two three, zero 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 one seven, in the amount of four hundred and two dollars and twelve cents. Transfer required, wire transfer number two zero two three, zero 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 two nine, through two zero two three, zero 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 three four, in the amount of six thousand, two hundred and three dollars and fifty six cents. Credit card transactions, seven two zero two three, through seven two zero two three, in the amount of fifty thousand, nine hundred and seven, fifty thousand, seven hundred and ninety seven dollars and sixty seven cents. Direct deposit number two three two four, zero 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 five, through two three two four, zero 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 one six, in the amount of two thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and sixty three cents. Total accounts payable, one hundred and eighty five thousand, nine hundred and fifty nine dollars and sixteen cents, for total disbursements of one million, three hundred and eighty five thousand, one hundred and eighty. Total disbursements of one million, three hundred and fifty eight thousand, one hundred and eighty nine dollars and fifty three cents.
Okay, we have a motion to second on July, voucher listing. The August twenty first, are there any questions, concerns? All favor then say aye.
Aye.
And both, both say aye, carried.
Alright, I hope Jonathan approved the voucher listing for August twenty third, through September twentieth, two thousand and twenty three. General launch for the payroll, direct deposit number nine zero zero, zero six zero four four three, through nine zero 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 six zero five three eight, in the amount of one hundred and fifty five thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and forty cents. Correct deposit number nine zero 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 six zero five, three nine, three nine zero 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 six zero six five nine, in the amount of one hundred and nine four thousand, five dollars and ninety five cents. Wire transfers, wire number two zero two three, zero 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 four three, through two zero two three, zero 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 six six, in the amount of three hundred and thirty five thousand, nine hundred and four dollars and fifty cents. For total payroll of six hundred and eighty four thousand, nine hundred and ninety eight dollars and fifty cents. Accounts payable, check number five six zero two, five six zero nine eight, in the amount of one hundred and twenty six thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and sixty nine cents. AP wire transfer, two zero two three, zero 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 five one, through two zero two three, zero 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 five four, in the amount of five thousand, nineteen dollars and twenty four cents. There are no credit card transactions for this, listening. Direct deposit number two three two four, zero 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 one seven, through two three two four, zero 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 two four, in the amount of two thousand, nine hundred and forty two dollars. For a total accounts payable of one hundred and thirty four thousand, eight hundred and eighty one dollars and ninety three cents, and total disbursements of eight hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and a lot of cents.
Second. Okay, we have the motion to second to the August twenty third, through September twenty. Twenty three, voucher listing. Are there any correct questions? Concerns, all favor then say aye.
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 Both say aye, motion is carried. We are on to delegations to be heard. I don't think we have anybody. And one person that checked. And that, that Michelle.
Oh, no, those are dashes.
What?
They're just dashes, I want it to be different, no yes, no.
Okay. So, we have no delegators. Okay, we are on to.
There are no, there are no, we got lots of donations, lots of donations, so I thank the Reeve family for a donation of five hundred dollars. To the emergency company for curtains, thank you very, very much. Family, um, also the district would like to thank Rudy and Grow, uh, Rachel and Evan Crankie for their organization and donations for the uh, the modeling of some of our immediate primary launches. Thank you very, very much, um, for those who assisted in their kind and energy effort, and again, we got some individuals listed there, uh, who helped volunteer with the project. And then we also have, um, listed there is an individual who donated as well to the staff launches. Uh, again, a list of people who donated items, dollars, and thank you very, very much for that, uh, for the, the launches, which is a hundred and five thousand dollars. Uh, between Rudy and Grow and other staff, or not, well, some staff, but also other standing members, so thank you very, very much for that. And then, uh, finally, we also had, uh, let's say Bob Angelique, who worked with the nine seventeen society for donating a hundred blood pocket constitutions to our eighth graders. On Constitution Day, so fits perfectly into the social status of the current government, and they went out there with his hands, and uh, thank you very much, Bob, for organizing that, it's nine seventeen. As well, so everybody supporting this, thank you, so just looking for a motion to approve the donations as presented.
I make a motion to approve. The donation from the Reeve family, the donation from the district families, and the donation from, uh, Angela.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
The reason I did not make the motion to approve the donation from Rachel Crankie, as President, uh, Dorrin. Knows there's an open investigation going on right now, which is named in, and I'm named in, and also I believe our president is named in. And I cannot watch it go any type of bias one way or the other, by accepting that donation and putting up, so I'm, I lost it against myself, all the board.
Okay, partial, right now we don't have.
Right.
Another, or another motion to that one. So we were, you know, we approved this.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion eliminating, all, all of the, one. Say aye.
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 Both same time, motion is carried.
Then I hope that we accept the donation from Rudy and Grow and make it valid.
Second. Okay, with motion and second. Any discussion?
I will be okaying for my several reasons.
All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same time, we have. Hey.
Now we're on personnel, we have a letter of resignation. The letter of resignation from, uh, these parents, uh, thank you very much, Stephanie, for your three years of service to us. Um, also, we have a C E O letter of appointment for Natalie's friends, uh, being primary supervisor as well, so, uh, again, just looking for, uh, a motion to approve the letter of resignation of Stephanie Schenk as present.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. And a second, to approve the resignation letter from Stephanie. Any discussion? In all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same time.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Now we have the letter of appointment, yeah, looking for a motion to, uh, uh, approve the letter of appointment for Natalie's friends as present.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, for the letter of appointment, any discussion? All favor then say aye.
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 Both same times, motion is carried.
Okay, we're on in, information that. In, in, restraint, we got the annual, uh, C P I requires us to report to our twin board in our community, and then I will be uploading this after this, uh, meeting as well. Uh, supposing restraint report for the last and previous school year, um, the report will highlight that there were no exclusion or restraint at Merton Intermediate School. Uh, there were five restraint incidents at Merton High Middle School, so. The expression can be, uh, to more, uh, to more, yeah, that'll, or that, uh, those experiences, maybe go by. This, we ask.
Uh, the two, uh, or.
You know, there is no ultimate, so, okay, yes.
So, uh, so I think the last two years of the.
None, zero.
What does, what does we strain?
Sure.
Restrain, when you have to report this at other various levels, or just restraining the restraint, and that's all the state's asking for, or?
Where does it mean? Right, so we, before you can jump in and be like, after my explanation, if I get to do a justice. But basically, whenever you restrain a child, whenever you have to physically hold them, again, we are crisis prevention and training, C P I training. Uh, improper techniques to withhold children for, to stop them from either becoming a harm to themselves or others. So, uh, that would be a restraint where we physically hold them down in a, in a way that is safe in that year. Or is that doing?
Yes.
A general, so not, like when I read that, this, yeah, last year, I would. It's not like a. Device or, no, we're not, it's not that, but, no, not that, yeah, completely, wouldn't have any, I just get, I'm not going through this, like. It's just, it's a good question.
And how do you report this to, this is something you're.
Every year, E P I, correct, yeah, I'll upload it into a, a portal at E P I, so that they have that on file, is due before September.
And we have to, we have to report it in case of circumstance, no decisions.
No, that's it, no, because whenever that happens, our staff is required to report that, it goes through a process. And, uh, we just kind of follow our training with that too as well, if it's required to read or whatever. Very far.
Hey, everywhere, any report able to do an achievement?
Uh, our school committee, uh, two achievements met, uh, last week on the E T, and again, uh, thanking to Steve, who gave us a continuous improvement update on what Anthony's team might have been working on. And then you'll also see some, uh, information that Maria collected as we related some survey data to our new teacher introduction, as well as, uh, our summer academy. Our summer academy is our, those in-service day that have journeyed as staff come onto our campus to, for, for learning, staff development, culture building, and just some kind of engagement as well, so this is some information. So, thank you Maria for putting that all together, and being the chief organizer for this day, appreciate it.
And then we're on to Britain now and Paul.
And then we're on personnel and policies. Sure, so this will be, we have again, for new business, and we can look at our first draft for some of the six hundred policies. And again, we did review, you know, talk about some employee benefits. Think that in survey will be coming out. And we'll be sharing that with our policy personnel committee and talking about its engagement levels with our, with our staff, around employee benefits, values, things like, they might find interesting and share with us. And then we obviously go, go right into the six hundred students. The six hundred series is our physical policies and things. We had a very robust conversation about many of them, all of them that were on there, some of which that we needed further conversation about, and those will be getting pulled off for, you know, kind of more of an initial rework at the policy committee level. And they'll be pulled out. And then also, we also talked about the records management retention policy, which is new this year. It's still in there. They have kind of updates and policies. We talked about this in general. There was some general records retention schedules that I had to communicate with. And again, in talking to Nicole and Andrew, we're going to pull this off for a first grade to go back to the committee level. Because the state of Wisconsin is telling school districts, or basically requesting school districts, individual school districts can create their own record schedules, as long as it doesn't go against the minimum requirement that the state requires you to keep your records for. So I'll be sharing the, the details of that record retention schedule with the committee on October eleventh, I think is our next meeting. So again, we're not going to be using, we're going to be bringing together eight twenty-three and then basically the eight twenty-three rules that go together. All at once, that will be convened to the board in October, early first officially, after we've updated improved policy, so they understand what that means. Because there's all sorts of different record rules that we have. That we do follow, but now we'll just have to, you know, make sure we do play with that. So more information, we'll put it up in the per review we can talk on. Okay, then we're on.
Indeed. Look at my screen here.
Yeah.
Only if it says note, does anything change in there. Is that correct? Or do you also just say new and being adopted from?
They think how it's highlighted.
Yeah, you have to look at the colored version.
Yeah.
You should be able to. I'll send it to you directly.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a couple people looking. And then. We need to color copies. Do that, do that for. Do that. So if you take a look at the, the online version, if it's highlighted in blue, there were comments that were made from the committee. That are then now reflected in the documents, which is then highlighted in yellow and blue. Let's have that in there.
So the two that are noted are those that are having further conversations.
There are two of them that got pulled out were.
Six, fifty-two, fifty-two, six, fifty-seven, five.
Okay, the other question. Now we're moving on to. In that, they have a. Issue with the. Right out here behind and. So due to the, the expansion of the parking lot, which has been. You know, well received by our primary families. We do need to finish the grading back there, because obviously when you start to expand, you have to pitch down, make sure water is running, we need to finish that project. So I'm engaged with four different contractors on my did three bids. And right now, the bid that I recommend the board going with is E and L grade. Again, the difference between E and L and country landscapes and tree service is, is they are going to remove any access dirt. In fact, a lot of dirt that has to be removed from that, and they will just take care of it for us, turnkey. They do all the grading, come in, landscape it to the appropriate grade, as well as, you know, grass seed, straw, manning, like that as well. They also are going to be doing all the landscaping around the parking lot, included with the new sidewalk as well. They're going to need to administer some, so yeah, so that we can get care of too as well. So in taking all the landscaping, grading work from the primary in the back. So they are going to have to remove a lot of earth and get back, because obviously we need to pitch the water back to our retention. Back there as well. So, so. The administration reference of board made a motion that could see eighty-eight hundred dollars to complete the excavation landscaping.
Did you see it?
We did. There's a new one that got added in, mine, from Cole. I got it on Saturday afternoon. If he came in, again, he's been a while. He came in very, very hot. At two thousand five. I thought that, that would create, oh, great, I'm sorry, that is brand, I'm sorry.
Okay, so.
It should be. Oh, it's. Yeah, it should be, I'm sorry. But those are.
So that's the one that's twenty-two, five?
Twenty-two, five, correct, yeah, Cole never got there.
Nice question. So. Your ask is that we made a motion to answer it, see eighty-eight.
Yes.
Five minutes before you said you'd like to go with D and L.
I'm going to go with D and L.
So I mean, could be.
Basically. Or so. If you'd like to.
Sure. All right. Motion to approve. The N L rating. In amount now to receive eight thousand eight hundred dollars to complete the excavation.
Okay, with motion and a second. My own concern is the. The one that hasn't been did in yet, second. Is a little. So that's why it would be nice. You stayed at eighty-one, eighty. I think that was.
I appreciate that. When did you start this process?
Six weeks ago. Yeah.
Everybody says. Long time.
Yeah, everyone is if this going, it's too possible, because that's one of the things, you know, come in one day, get it all done, you know, where they go, we know that it's coming up to peak grass season growing, or grass growing. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the D and L rating of eighty, hundred dollars, say aye.
Aye.
In the same time. Motion carried. Okay, we are on two, first reading of. Six hundred. So. I guess, again, this is the first grade. The committee did review them on September seventh. Before we get into, there were two policies that the committee wanted to have a full board discussion around. And that would be the fund balance policy and the purchasing policy. Are there any other questions or feedback or? Statements about any of the other policies that like, maybe the review or administration. Yeah, thank you so much. Nicole, thank you very much. This is, I know a lot of reading, a lot of review. So I really appreciate that. The two policies that we wanted to have a full discussion around was, the first one we talked about our fund balance policy. Okay, policy six, three. Our fund balance policy currently, right now, says anything over twenty percent. Again, twenty percent fund balance is probably the minimum that I would be comfortable with, because you don't want a short-term borrow, and particularly as we start to talk about the interest rates, the money isn't cheap anymore. Pete and I were talking about, about six, seven years ago, when we had to short-term borrow, if we could cover our expenses, you know, during low points of cash flow, it was at point six percent. Two, you know, it was peanuts. The lawyer fees cost more than the, than the interest. So our proposed fund balance policy is basically, we still want to maintain the minimum at twenty percent. So it does give the directorial board to keep no less than twenty percent. But it says anything. It says twenty to fifty percent. And it's a state in there that the board anything above twenty percent, if they wanted to have the conversation about possibly, you know, softening the, the levy or the amount of dollars that can be collected from our tax base. Possibly to lower the fund balance as well. And that threshold is right around that fifty percent. So anything over fifty percent would be more strongly considered, but we. We still, yeah, could talk about it, correct. It is over twenty. It's over twenty, still talk about it, correct. Yep, yep. Yep, but over fifty, naturally where, again, we, I would recommend that any school board to start to really talk about assigning fund balance specific areas. And again, you, a couple ways you can do that, but you can assign to a facility project, or you can assign it to a specific code or project, or you can always make the transfer to one forty-six. So. Records back about our current fund balance right now in the district is approximately thirty-eight, thirty-nine percent un-audited, do you believe, right around there. And then final audit. So I think what, Nicky and I met on this, it's just. What's the right? Range? To be good stewards and to be thinking about long-term projects that need. To be taken care of, to have that down the reserve, it's built. Cover for future and. I guess, I didn't feel comfortable just. Putting forward, you know, fifteen, is that the right, I haven't. So that's why, you know, as we talked in, in that committee, that's the part where it's kind of a conversation, because I don't. It's kind of arbitrary, but at the same time, there's rationale, why you would have a larger fund balance, you don't borrow, because we only get it three times a year, times a year. We get money in from street assets, you know, taxpayers, so. There's a lot, there could be a drive activity there, where, you know, we would have to borrow. And then, again, just thinking about future needs of the district on capital projects, expansion, if we continue to add basements. That's all. I don't have a very number.
Give them a number, building doors, the amount of building going on around the. When it gets expansion, I think it's a question we have to. Not for election, but that's. I don't know, we need to have that point, that's something else we talked about. We want to know before that.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Yeah.
The question I forgot to ask, I'll say, I thought about it afterwards, so it's. For this remodel. Was that all on ten, or was that? Forty-six and ten? How did we do that? And what was our percentage back then? Because that, we didn't have to go to taxpayers to do this.
Yep.
So I guess, definitely that's, is a better historical context, too, on a big project, sure.
So we pulled approximately one million dollars in. One million dollars from forty-one. Okay, so, and that's why my forty-one was, is, is a lot lower than one forty-six. We haven't had a touch of one forty-six yet. So we took about a million from one forty-one. About probably eight, nine hundred thousand from fund ten.
Okay.
And then approximately a hundred to a hundred fifty thousand from one fifty. As we have remembered, we can pass for location.
Yeah.
Yeah, so anything that was remodeled in the kitchen, we were able to maximize our fund fifty as much as we possibly could. And we were earmarking some things, because EPI only allows you to get soap, so you know, you just don't want to keep collecting money in your food service account, unless you got a projected plan. We were able to leverage that opportunity. Yeah, and just to kind of put retro, I think we started to think about kind of our low watermark store, but it's right around that six, seven hundred thousand dollars when we kind of come to our low dip with our low cash flow. So it still is, you know, six hundred thousand is, you know, we're very comfortable with being in desert operation at that level. So. So right now, we, you know, fund forty-six, we continue to bolster that, that's over a million dollars. We put another fifty thousand into fund forty-one at the annual meeting last month, or earlier this month. So again, we have over probably about one point two billion dollars just in facility only. Project.
So, but there are. Potential pay.
We.
Think about fire system, that's not going to be.
Oh, yes.
Cheap.
Not.
When they have to pre-do that. That school is almost thirty years old.
Correct.
Where's the fire system?
Our fire alarm system, well, over there, it's thirty years old, and we continue to, you know, it's still operating and things like that. It's an older system, simplified system that we continue to. I want to, and I don't even say any, we still could fix. We certainly can. I mean, when we extended our two, we said four groups. You know, we were able to find four, several, four. Difficult, but we were able to find four.
Go back to the original sketch. The policy is written in between twenty and twenty-five. I guess, the committee is open to if the board, whatever the board's desire is or comments, if they would like that modified. But that's kind of how we wanted to present it.
Other any downsides to? Even as it is?
Still gives the more plus.
Yeah. Rather than, I don't think it finds any future for it, yeah, because it. It just kind of keeps a low mark of twenty, and anything above that, any future board could utilize that. Again, I don't know if you think so desired. So I don't think it limits it just with cap on the top side, saying, hey, if we get over fifty. That needs to go to the.
But, or, or you can, let's start assigning it, or you can move it into one forty-six. You can do some. Correct. Makes me some. Then the other one was. The other one was our purchasing policy. Yeah, so the reason why we bring this one forward, because this would be a, a difference in what our current practice is. Currently, our current practice is anything over five thousand dollars, that the administration needs to come to the board and ask. Okay. The recommendation from the administration, or when I, when I presented this policy to the committee, was to raise that from five to ten thousand. And again, you'll see in the bidding policy that it still is anything over five thousand dollars, we're going to go up to it, or so that. Bidding is still there, that's five thousand above, but just asking the board if they would consider raising the cap from five thousand to ten thousand for administrative. Decision making, instead of having to bring. Into the board as a. New agenda. An example would be the grading, is an example. Another one that we brought to the board was the five thousand forty-dollar garage set of groundboards for a meeting chair. So just asking me to put a thousand dollars in something that would already be comfortable. And also, if you remember, the great part of the whole special.
Sorry. Any other downsides to that?
No, I think, again, that's our. And so we go on here. It was a check balance thing. So I think that's. There's nothing all right. And you just.
Some discussion, and I think it had not been. The amount of five thousand has not been touched since two thousand.
Two thousand, two thousand.
Yeah, so it's.
Also, we'll just move that forward and make this another conversation, because we'll try to reach out to the committee members or myself, and the final reading for the E still going to be. Okay, we're on the future agenda items and reasons. And for me, that's going to be point third. And that's where we will set the final budget in. And then number thirteen. For self-valuation for the cost. One, I agree. Any twenty-seven that's happened, that's sort of cap, we've just kept it correct. If that's okay. Any agenda? We are going to bring that. We'll see.
We suspect. To give us an update.
Okay, an update.
Okay.
Next month. Both steps. For additional items, etc. Sure.
And we're going to go to the short term, now that that line, so we'll be looking for longer, but inside of the longer.
Okay. I'll include that underneath my initial update. If that hurt.
It better hurt.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Yeah, motion and second, all in favor, say aye, aye, like. Both same time, give your.